Good evening and welcome to the Milford School Committee Meeting of November 3rd, 2016. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. There are members of the Milford Town Cryer and the Milford Daily News in attendance. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please see me at the end of the meeting. Welcome. I would like to open up tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for a teacher, Mrs. Susan Passadi, employee of the school district for 22 years, six months, who passed away this week. So if we could please have a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and to Mrs. Passadi's family, we send our sincerest condolences. Okay, first agenda item is approval of the minutes which we are going to pass over today. Conversation with Melissa. There was some information that was left out of the minutes that we figured out today. So she's going to correct it, and we're going to vote on it at the meeting of the 17th. So we're passing over the approval of the minutes. Second agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anybody have an announcements, correspondence, and distributions? No? Okay, next. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Just one thing, I don't know if Kevin was going to cover the Realtor Forum later on as part of...
Yeah, you know, we'll only talk about the middle school update.
Okay, perfect. And I can give some feedback then.
Good. All right. All right, invitation to speak. And I believe this pretty young lady is our high school liaison. And your name, please?
Nicole Dalgen. I'm a senior here at high school.
Welcome, Nicole.
Thanks. I just here to talk to you about a few things going on at high school. First, last week we had our Spirit Week, so Monday was pajama day, Tuesday Decades Day, Hawaiian Day, America Day, and Class Color Day. Participation in Spirit Week events was at an all-time high this year, and students donated goods for the Hope for Heroes campaign to support our local veterans. Next, our pep rally on Friday. Classes battled in games of pillow pull this year and dressed up representing our class colors. So the freshmen wore yellow, sophomores white, juniors red, and seniors black. Next is an update on athletics. So our girls varsity volleyball team plays their first playoff game tonight versus Tantasco at home. They finished their regular season with a winning record of 13 and 5. Our boys cross-country team won the league. Girls varsity soccer, we made $260 at our pink game, all of which was donated to breast cancer research last week. And our varsity cheerleaders took first place at the tri-county invite last weekend. Next is a media coverage update. The town cry ran several highlights on the high school and the latest addition, including our early college high school program, the HTM field trip to Johnson and Wales, and the Voice of Democracy essay contest. This edition also recognized Mr. Cunningham for being selected by the Department of Education to serve on the MCAS English Language Arts Exam Development Committee. And lastly, in our second year of science Olympiad competitions, we had another medal win. Congratulations to the science Olympiad team of Kevin Hidalgo and Nathan LeBlanc for winning the silver medal in the electric vehicle competition at the regional science Olympiad meet last week. We compete monthly in the south-central region, which consists of Milford High School, Medway High School, Alverames High School, Bridgewater Random High School, and Stodden High School. That's about all for my updates tonight.
Very nice. Any committee members have any questions?
Questions or anything? Just a comment. You mentioned that the pep rally. I saw the video on Facebook of the entire school singing the national anthem, and that was awesome.
It was awesome, yeah.
It was really cool.
Really powerful, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, of course.
Any other members?
Sure.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your senior year.
Thanks.
Bye-bye. Next agenda item is the school committee member, school liaison assignments. And the superintendent and I have had some discussion about this, and we're going to make a change to this this year. We have three designated dates set up of when we're going to tour the schools, and we feel that, you know, that is a better way to handle it, is we go into a group, into, you know, the date that assigned to a school. We can spend more time in that school. So we're going to change that. We're not going to assign one school to one particular member like we had in the past. So if everybody's okay with it, we're going to use the three dates that the superintendent has picked.
Well, my only question, if I could, Mr. Chair, is there was some brief discussion during some of our budget meetings about having the school liaisons interact a little bit more with the building principals to get a better idea of their needs and wants as we go into budget season. So if that was a consideration during, I believe it was a budget meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You may not even have been there. It might be one that you couldn't make.
No, I remember that conversation.
Kathy or Kevin, thoughts on that?
No, we did speak about that. I think one of the things we're going to try to do, and I don't have the dates in front of me right now, but I think in the December tour, we were going to allow committee members to have conversations with some of the building administrators.
We want to set time aside for that.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Every other member, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And can you get the dates sent again tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll have Melissa send the dates out to everybody one more time.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Next agenda item is middle school east reuse. John, will you speak to that, please?
Yeah, sure. The committee toured the facility last evening. I think there were four of us. The schedule didn't work out great for a few of the members. We went with the administration, Rob Quinn, the director of facilities. I think it went well. I think maybe a revisit may be in order during the daylight hours. We had some issues with being able to turn some of the lights on in select areas, and I don't think that, you know, everyone got the full effect of the, you know, the actual conditions of the building. But it was pretty clear that, excuse me, it's in a bit of, excuse me, it's in a bit of disrepair, clearly, certainly on the surface. But I think it was beneficial. At least one member had never been in the building, maybe two, or not in recent years. Scott and I were there. We've certainly become very familiar with it in the past year or so.
I'm going to have my nail forwarding. I've spent too much time in that building in the last two years.
You probably should. So it went well. When we, you know, part of the discussion about east, from my perspective, has been through this whole thing is, you know, looking at the needs of our district and what does, you know, does east fill a need at some point, as opposed to looking at it from the perspective of, we have this school, what can we do with it? So we're looking, you know, through the long-range planning committee to really identify the district needs and wants, and identify those before we really can bring any ideas forward for the future use of east. And with that, I'm hoping that, you know, through this planning committee, we can look at the physical characteristics and conditions a little bit closer. Myself, Rob Quinn, and a few others can, I hope, focus on identifying and quantifying some of the conditions, deficiencies, and such, from an edu-, you know, if it would have continued use as an educational facility.
Right.
So, you know, I will probably later ask for it to be a future agenda item. But I think it was a good visit last evening, and I, you know, I think we should look at it in daylight hours and get a much better overall feel for it if the rest of the committee would agree.
If the rest of the committee feel the same way, would you like to have me have the superintendent set up for Saturday, daylight?
Sure. Sure. See it again in the daylight. No, it does really, it does change, to John's point. I do think that it does change things. Anytime you see a building, whether it's daytime or nighttime, we did have some more logistical than anything else issues. Just there's a very specific, to be honest with you, there's a very specific kind of key it takes to turn on some of the lights. We didn't have that key. So we couldn't turn on some of those lights.
Exactly.
We found out, MacGyvered it a little bit, but we were struggling with being able to go and see some of the areas that I think we do need to see. I think it'd be a good opportunity to have the full committee. Hopefully, we can work it out to a time where the full committee's able to go, all seven members, and be able to see that. I think, I do think there may be some value as well in, you know, having Rob. I know he's got a punch list of the things that, you know, where the, what are some of the things that he sees as our facilities director that are sort of eminent needs, if they're based on what his experience is? I mean, he's been managing our buildings now for 13 years. He knows that building better than anyone in town, and kind of going through, hey, here's where the building is, here's where the building isn't. One of the things that was even, you know, that Rob even brought up last night is that there's no working functional phone system in the building at all, just as one example.
No internet.
Right. But those, right, so if he can kind of come, ask him as he's going through, pointing out, hey, here are some of the things that are really working in favor of the building that are going really well, that's an add for the building, that's sort of the, what they call it, the Ben Franklin system, right? So the pros on one side and the cons on the other. Have him go through from a structural facilities component and give the pros and the cons of what he sees. And then as he's giving us, helping us with the tour of the building, he can point out the boiler is still in very good shape, things like that. And I've had the luxury of having that tour. I think it would be helpful for the full committee as well.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, you'll set that up first?
Absolutely.
Fire out some dates, and we'll all try and...
I'm actually putting a list together for Melissa right now as you speak.
Okay.
Yep.
And then Kathy, of course, will make sure it gets posted.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other member? Okay. Next agenda item is report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. McIntyre.
Thank you. So the first one is, and I'm going to expand this to just general marketing of the Milford Public Schools, but we had a great event about a week ago where the Milford High School faculty and students came down to Stacy Middle School and presented on a lot of the activities and opportunities available. And I actually would like to show the committee the video that came out of that. I'm just going to cue that up, and then we'll talk about it a little bit, because it connects to the Realtor presentation that Jill kind of referenced earlier. So as this is queuing up, it does take a second. I don't know, so I'm not going to kill time for about 30 seconds. So this is a promo video put together by Mr. Poulster and the Video Production Company or Department at the high school.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate, and I'm a junior at Milford High School.
Hi, I'm Patrick. I'm also a junior at Milford High School, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about what MHS has to offer. Milford High School is an institution of educational excellence that values the development of intellectual curiosity, honorable character, and noble citizenship.
Milford High School is divided into six instructional areas where our students engage in a rigorous college preparatory curriculum, including an expansive honors and advanced placement program.
In these classrooms, students pursue excellence in courses such as English, mathematics, foreign language, social studies, and science, just to name a few.
Practical arts, fine arts, music, and athletics are also a major part of what Milford High School has to offer. Classes in 21st century technology are consistent with current practice in educational technology and provide hands-on training to prepare students for life after high school.
Milford Scarlet Hawk Athletics, or Scarlet Hawk Nation as we like to call our teams, product sells on three core values: relentlessly pursuing excellence and improvement, championship sportsmanship, and representing Scarlet Hawk Nation with respect and integrity 24/7.
We offer 23 varsity sports at Milford High School during the fall, winter, and spring season for the boys and girls.
Lances pitch out to deep left field back towards the fence, and that is over the fence for a two-run homerun.
The Milford High School Music Department offers a variety of courses to students of all interests and ability levels. Whether you're interested in learning to play the piano, studying other cultures, or more focused on the technical aspects of music construction, they're the class for you.
Come check out our highly regarded music program and be a part of our success.
Our course in ceramics is designed to give students the opportunity to construct basic ceramic forms using hand-building techniques while introducing a variety of glaze applications.
In art fashion, students will explore the world of fashion through basic art techniques. Instructional methods include lecture, studio demonstration, and research of current and historical trends.
In computer programming and job programming, students will be introduced to computer science and computer programming through the visual basic programming language. Students will use these skills to create simple computer programs, interfaces, and games.
In computer systems technology, students will be introduced to the hardware components inside a computer. Students will learn about motherboard, processors, hard drive, memory, video cards, and more. Students will also have the opportunity to take a computer apart, put it back together, and replace hardware components.
Early childhood education is an elective offer to all students that offers a series of three classes. Students in early childhood education have an opportunity to take care for an infant simulator, work with young children, gain practical parenting skills, as well as an opportunity to assist in kindergarten and first grade classes throughout the Milford School system.
Food service management is a two-part elective offer to all students. In these classes, students develop their culinary skills which can lead them to making successful meals for themselves, as well as spark an interest in pursuing a career in the culinary field.
In web design, students will learn all aspects of planning, designing, and coding websites using HTML code and Adobe Dreamweaver. Adobe Photoshop will be introduced to teach students how to create graphics and manipulate images for their websites.
Photography is designed to take the student from the history of photography to advanced digital imaging. Students will become proficient in the use of Adobe Photoshop CS5. Students will learn how to use manual and digital cameras and set up studio lighting. They will also be introduced to advanced studio and commercial photography.
In engineering, students will receive instruction in fundamental technology, theory, and application. Content areas contain learning standards of engineering design, construction technologies, energy and power technologies, and many more.
Computer aided design, or CAD, is designed for students who wish to become proficient in computer-aided design and establish a solid foundation for a career in the industry.
Robotics provides students with an introduction to the field of robotics. It requires students to apply skills from science, math, technology, and computer science classes to meet robotic challenges. Students will design, build, and program simple robots to perform specific functions.
In sports marketing, students will learn about the billion-dollar sports industry. This course will help students develop a thorough understanding of marketing concepts and theories as they apply to the sports industry.
The hospitality and tourism management program at Milford High School is the first of its kind in a non-vocational public high school in Massachusetts. It is a two-year Massachusetts state-recognized Chapter 74 program where our students learn about the hospitality industry in the classroom, in a virtual setting and with hands-on experience in the field. Throughout the course, we covered many aspects of the hospitality industry, including hotels, food and beverage, event planning, airlines, resorts, cruises, casinos, sales, and marketing. We also put a large focus on professional development, including preparing resumes and portfolios.
Video production is an elective offer to all students that teaches the essentials of television and film production with hands-on project work. They will have the opportunity to use professional HD equipment, produce live television shows in collaboration with Milford TV, and even learn about aerial videography with lessons of flying a drone camera.
Milford High School has all of these classes and many more wonderful offerings for each of its students. Together with Milford High School, you can soar.
So this was part of a bigger presentation that was put on by, let me get back to my mic. This was part of a bigger presentation that was put on by the high school faculty and students, which started with a band performance, cheerleaders, the school administration kind of presenting the academic program, and then students and faculty members shared kind of details on some of the more unique offerings at the high school. And we had a similar response to what we did last year. There was a tremendous excitement from the students at the middle school. Last year, we only presented to eighth graders. This year, we presented to seventh and eighth graders. We're also following up with a school visit on November 15th for all of our eighth-grade students. And I'm going to pass out a postcard that I believe went out either, it's either going out tomorrow or went out today. For an event on December 7th, which is the Activities Arts and Athletics Showcase. And there are basically every athletic team, the coaches, every extracurricular activity, and their sponsors. Our arts and music programs are all represented, and students have an opportunity to kind of interact with coaches, with players, ask questions about what it means to be part of the band at the high school, part of the wrestling team, involved in, you know, the science Olympiad. And it's just a great way for students to engage with, you know, students who are actually actively participating in those programs, as well as the coaches and advisors.
Very nice.
And then I'm going to just add one thing about, we also ran a forum for Realtors this past week as well, where not only did the high school team present, but Craig actually also presented on kind of what's being offered pre-K through A across the district, and really gave the Realtors an opportunity to ask us questions about specific programs. And I think a lot of the folks there, even if they've been lifelong Milford residents, were unaware of some of the offerings that are currently available throughout the district.
Okay. Any member, any questions? Jill?
Just to add to that, a couple of things. The first thing that you notice here on the website is there's a new informational page for parents and students, so they get a sense for everything that's going on in the school district. As far as the Realtor Forum, we had 22 Realtors come Tuesday morning, and there were three things that really stood out in my mind. The first, as you saw in the video and as Kevin pointed out, is the fact that we do have a lot to offer in terms of academics, athletics, arts, activities, and, you know, we offer a lot more than other communities in the area. And I think that was really eye-opening for a lot of the Realtors. I think the second thing that stood out, Kevin presented Craig, Carrie, and Peter, and when they get up there and they speak about the school district, they speak with such pride and passion and energy, and I think that really resonated with the folks in the room. You know, a lot of the Realtors have family that work in the district, and they know just how much these teachers, how hard these teachers work and how much they care about the students. And then the third thing that I think resonated with the group was that the schools, the entire district's very focused on building partnerships throughout the community. And that's just, you know, the Realtors are one group that we really want to partner with going forward. And one thing that they asked is for us to provide as much information as we can to them. The more information they have, the more they can share with prospective buyers and families that are looking to get and move into the community, so.
Yeah, and one thing, I think one thing that came out of that also is that we're going to try to provide almost like a quarterly update or newsletter to not only the Realtors but other kind of community partners that we have, as a way just to kind of keep people up to date on what's happening. So we'll include some press clippings, a couple of updates, maybe from some of the principals, and maybe just, you know, just a summary of some new activities going on, just as a way to kind of keep some of our community partners connected to us.
It's something they can actually hand to the prospective buyer.
Yeah, or they can just, some talking points, too.
Scott? So with regards to that, so I'm glad, certainly, I love the video. I think it's great. Definitely does a good job of highlighting a lot of the great things that we all know, right, because of how close we are to the situation as a result of being school committee members and parents. But I think it's great to see that we're continuing to tell our story to the community, which is fantastic. Couple of questions I had was just with regards to the Realtors. I appreciate you sharing some of the feedback. Did they ask or did they talk about what they're seeing as sort of being some selling that they're looking for? You said they're looking for a lot of data. What are some of the selling points that they, did they talk about, what are some of their selling points that sort of sell Milford schools to people? Because I will tell you, I do still hear from people out and about within Milford as well as outside of Milford that talk about, wow, they're aware of some of the things, some of the great things we've got going on, and they're looking, they're actually looking at purchasing a home here so that they can become part of Milford Public Schools. I am still hearing some instances where it's people that will say, wow, you know what, I can get a really good value for a house, and I'll school choice them to someplace else. So I'm hearing less of the latter, which is a good thing, but I am still, it's still out there. That's not a secret. That's something we're all aware of. That's part of the reason for the marketing campaign.
Yeah, and I think that's some of the positive momentum that we're building.
Yep.
Because they're hearing about, even, and a lot of the Realtors were lifelong Milford residents, and they still were not aware of, because either they haven't been in the Milford Public Schools, or their children have long since graduated. But it was interesting that a number of the Realtors had children who went through the system, who went to fantastic colleges and universities. And that's really what we're trying to sell, because if you look at, you look at where kids are going onto after they graduate from, and I think that's a big selling point. Last year, you know, Harvard. This year, we've already got a student that's going to Yale. We get a number of students into, you know, the most highly competitive universities, and that's really the narrative we want out there. Not only do we offer more than I think the vast majority of districts around here, who tend to be a lot smaller, we're also sending our graduates to, you know, top-level colleges and universities, and they have the opportunity to be competitive applicants, which is really, at the end of the day, what a family is looking for.
So is that what the Realtors, and that was my question, is did the Realtors give you feedback or say, hey, here are the things that are selling points that my prospective buyers are looking for, talking about?
No, we definitely had that discussion, and they shared some of the things, some of the concerns they were hearing, some of the positives, and we really tried to, you know, we really emphasized, this is what we have to offer in the Milford Public Schools, and we feel like we have a fantastic educational product. And I think we're starting to see, you know, some of those numbers are starting to shift because I think the word is getting out.
Okay. One thing that will be really helpful, and I don't know if Melissa made copies.
Yeah, I've got them right here.
We have copies of the presentation, but there's a one-page profile that talks a lot about those key selling points. It talks about college matriculation. It talks about the number of honors programs. We have 52 courses at the honors level. It talks about the AP programming. It talks about all the athletics that we have to offer, the arts, the clubs and activities. And those are really the key selling points for Milford, because you go to surrounding communities, and they don't offer the same level of clubs, activities, sports.
So is that what the Realtors were saying to us or to you during the forums? Is that what they were saying back and saying, hey, here are the things that my clients are looking for? I know this is what we're sort of putting forth as our, as part of our marketing campaign, which I think, again, don't get me wrong, I think it's all wonderful. I think it's great, great stuff, but it's got to be a balance, too, right? So it's great that this is what we're promoting, but we also have to find out what the clients are looking, what their clients are looking for, too, as part of this process.
And that was a big reason why we brought them in, so we could have that dialogue.
And so what was their, so I guess I'm not clear on what the answer to my question is.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was looking for.
That's what they said. This is what I'm looking for?
This is the information that will help them. Now, they also gave some feedback on the other side, right? So one of the biggest challenges that they face is the average test scores, MCAS scores and the PARC scores. But I think Kevin and Craig did a good job explaining that, and that that's just one measure. You really need to look at other measures to get a better sense for how the schools are performing. And I think the Realtors all understood that, and that's why this information is so important, because when they get that comment from a prospective buyer that, hey, Milford doesn't exactly have great test scores, there's a lot more that goes into that, and this helps to explain that, so.
That's great. Thank you.
And so I'll get the, the profile's actually available on the prospective student and families webpage as well. And I don't think you can see it there, but if you scroll down. But I'll get the committee a copy at the next meeting just to hand it out as part of the, as part of the package, as you see. And this is what we send to colleges and universities as part of a student's college application as well, because colleges kind of like the norm where a kid, where a student lands in terms of, you know, SAT scores compared to the average at the school, how many AP courses do they take compared to the numbers that are offered? Do they kind of max out in terms of the most competitive courses, those types of things? All right.
Chair?
I know that all of this came out of the marketing and really trying to retain students in Milford, and I think maybe the unintended, or maybe it wasn't intended consequence of this work is developing a comfort level for students and families who are in the eighth grade, and transitioning to a high school is a huge move for a student.
Absolutely.
And if you're a student or you're a parent, right now, I already feel like my eighth grader is enveloped within Milford High School, and I already feel that the outreach is providing that sense of comfort to students who haven't already been here. So to think that this is now the second communication that's going to go home to an eighth grader and the family in addition to what happened at Stacy, I think that's, it just goes a very long way in helping a student feel like Milford High School is a place where I'm going to feel a sense of welcome and a sense of home. So I think it's a great move for lots of different reasons. So thank you, please extend that to Carrie for the work that you're doing on this.
No, thank you. Any other member? Okay. Your castle?
Yep, so I'm going to go back to the video monitor. One thing I'm trying to do, and I'll come over here as I say that, like you can hear my camera. One thing that I'm trying to do this year is really just communicate with the community more broadly than I have in the past. And so each month, we're sending out, I'm sending out a blackboard email message. It just gives kind of an update on what's happening in the schools. The other thing I'm doing is doing a brief video with Milford TV each month, and I want to share that video because it does talk about the Castle Program and a couple of[1764.11] and a couple of other things that are going on. And it gives you a sense of kind of some of the, just broader outreach we're trying to do just to the general community, and as much, I want to see, get as much views as possible for these videos as well. Just from a narcissistic. Thank you.
We should click on the thumbs up, too.
That's right.
Oh, yeah. Two thumbs.
I'm trying to build the car chase into the next one, I'm not sure how we're gonna work that out. Hello, and welcome to this month's superintendent talk. My name is Kevin McAtter, and I'm the superintendent of the Milford Public Schools. Today I want to speak about social emotional learning and a recent Castle visit, the Woodland Elementary School dedication, and the Global Citizenship Program at Milford High School. Castle, the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, visited the Milford Public Schools to observe, assess, and evaluate our social emotional learning programs across the district. During their visit, they spent time in our schools and classrooms, reviewed our district data, and met with teachers, administrators, students, and parents. SEL, or social emotional learning, is a term being thrown around in educational circles. But what does it mean? Social and emotional learning is the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set to achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. The five core competencies of social emotional learning are self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, social awareness, and relationship skills. We look forward to receiving the report from Castle and analyzing their findings with the hopes of strengthening our social emotional learning supports and embedding them in everything that we do. Students learn more when they feel welcome, safe, and supported in their school and classrooms. I want the Milford Public Schools to be a place where all students feel welcome and supported to achieve their goals. On Sunday, October thirtieth, we hosted the new Woodland Elementary School dedication ceremony. I want to thank the entire Milford community for providing the resources to complete this amazing project. The Woodland Elementary School, for at least the past four years, was a building that students enthusiastically ran into in the morning and were reluctant to leave in the afternoon. The new Woodland facility leads everyone to that same level of enthusiasm and provides the Milford community with a school that truly meets the needs of twenty-first century learners. The new Woodland Elementary School is a technology-rich learning environment that provides flexible learning spaces to meet the diverse needs of our students today and in the future. I wish to recognize both the Woodland Building Committee and the Milford School Committee for their unwavering support of the project. I particularly want to acknowledge the work of Elder Cheiki and Jonathan Bruce for the countless hours they've committed to this project, and their ability to creatively solve issues as they arose, and their responsiveness to the needs of the school community. Our facilities director, Rob Quinn, has been an invaluable resource on this project from the beginning, and he is often an unsung hero, whose critical work is often unrecognized and unappreciated. I also want to recognize the work of the Long Range Planning Committee that started this work back in the early nineteen nineties, and had the vision to see this project long before anyone else did. The completion of the Woodland project was the culmination of that committee's work, and we are starting the process of developing a new long-range education plan, and that team is comprised of administrators, educators, school committee members, and community members. Finally, I would like to share some information about the new Global Citizenship Program at Milford High School. The Global Citizenship Program's mission is to promote global competence, a key twenty-first century skill in Milford school students. Through interdisciplinary academic study, community service, and international travel, participants increase their global awareness, heighten their appreciation of diversity, and enlarge their capacity to work and contribute in an increasingly interconnected world. There are a number of expectations for the certificate program in global citizenship. Students will demonstrate proficiency and confidence in second language, attain knowledge of and show an appreciation for cultural differences, examine contemporary issues from multiple perspectives, engage in community service, and contribute to the GCP community of learners, and share their expertise and enthusiasm with the broader community, actively promote global understanding and the peaceful resolution of conflicts, achieve personal growth through reflection, strive to realize their full potential to lead as global citizens. Currently, there are twenty-six students enrolled in the program, and the program is supported by eight advisors. I want to thank Liz Alagretza, Christine Oliveri, Jen Norgianian, Deb Montero, Deb Sanzon, Anne Marie Franzen, Lillian Vasquez, and Lisa Bertinazzi for their work in building and promoting this initiative. The world our students are graduating into is becoming a smaller and smaller place, and we want to ensure that they are prepared for the future success. I also want to share a couple of upcoming events. The Milford High School Theater Workshop is presenting our town on Friday, November eighteenth, Saturday, November nineteenth, and Sunday, November twentieth. For more information, please go to the Milford High School webpage. The Seventh Annual Turkey Day Fun Run will be held on Thursday, November twenty-fourth at seven-thirty in the morning, and will begin and end in the high school parking lot. There are many, many great things happening across the Milford Public Schools. Please check our website or follow us on Twitter, at Milford Schools, to keep up to date. Thank you, Hock Nation.
Very nice. Very well done. You think about role in television?
I'm, I'm waiting for Miami nomination.
Kevin, I, I can't recall this, is that linked to the Milford Public Schools website?
With this video?
Or any videos you record?
So what, what I've done right now is, and we're gonna link the two videos I've done, but what I have right now is the emails that I've sent out through Blackboard. What I'm going to do is add the videos as well on the superintendent's kind of welcome page. I do want to thank Milford TV because they've been great in terms of, you know, working with, with me, connecting the video to the audio. It's, it's been a great, it's been a great part of our stuff. I want to thank Rob O'Keefe and the whole team over there, because they're really doing a great job, not only with the videos that I've been doing, but Dr. Joseph has done a number of MPS leadership talks. You, Craig and Carrie jumped on one.
Did.
That's, that's fantastic television. It's must-see TV.
But to Joe's point, are they, are they all available so the public can see?
They, they are. So a lot of the, a lot of the videos that you saw that were linked on the prospective students and families page.
Yep.
Were mostly connected to Milford High School, but there's a number of spaces on the webpage, and we're using Twitter, too, as another way to promote the, the videos that we're doing on a regular basis, and it's just, it's just a way to increase communication.
Because these are the positive things that we want to get out there.
Absolutely.
Any other committee member? No? Okay, next agenda item is reported, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Mr. Consigli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a minute and talk about some of the work we're doing with teachers around professional learning communities. We worked really hard to get into scheduling during the day, teachers in the same room. So at the elementary schools, it looks a little different than it does, say, at the middle school, where you have a team of teachers who are sitting. We do have teams of teachers at the elementary level. It's different in the fact that at the, the middle school level, when the teams of teachers get together, they have the same kids that they're talking about, although they all have different subject areas, they're talking about the same kids. Where, at the elementary levels, we have the opposite. We have, we're all talking about the subject matter, but the kids are different, if, if that makes sense to everybody. And it goes all the way up. So we worked really hard, and at the, the middle school levels, at the middle school and high school, it seems that we have some more time built in schedules for teachers to sit and talk and, and collaborate than we do at the elementary levels. So, that said, what we're trying to do during that time is create professional learning communities. We call it all different things across the, across our, our schools, whether it's TCT, which is Team Collaboration Time, or Common Planning Time. It's all called different things, but really what we want to see is we want to see professional learning communities. And professional learning communities are focused on three main ideas. One, that all students learn at high levels. Two, if we're here to help all students learn, we must work collectively and collaboratively, and our focus must be on results rather than intentions. So what we want to see happen during those times is we want to see talks about student data, even though you may not have the same kids in a room, a lot can happen when we're, we're talking about, say, an everyday math assessment. Every teacher in the room gives an everyday math assessment, then we look at, all right, where did my kids struggle, where did your kids struggle, where did your kids do well, where did my kids do well? And we can really move our district forward when all of us in the same room are talking about the same kinds of things and, and where we're successful and where we're not successful. So that's, those are the three main ideas. What we've done with it is we've started, I, this past Tuesday, worked with the, the staff at Brookside and gave a presentation about this with them. At the same time, Ryan McHale and Nancy Angiolini were, was giving a present, a very similar presentation that Ryan McHale, who's a teacher, gave to Stacy Middle School. We intended to work with Woodland staff and, and Memorial staff as well, and, and with the high school about these things. We also have been working with, with the, the principals, reading a book called Leaders of Learning, and in that book, it, it talks about professional learning communities. One of the things that we've started in all of our meetings is making sure that we start with norms, and it sounds silly to teachers at first, but just making sure that we all have the same expectations for meetings. You know, put your cell phones away, we're all welcoming, we're all accepting ideas, and, and we try not to be critical of ideas, those kinds of things. We want to make sure that, that during the meetings, the, the worst, the worst thing that can happen is we take this forty-five minutes of sacred time and it becomes wasted time. So we really are stressing to them that you have to have an agenda, you have to come in with an agenda and stays, and stick to this agenda. So we're trying to work with teachers so that they are empowered to create their own agendas, which is really what a professional learning community is about, that they create their own, and it doesn't have to be driven by administration. And we, we, at the same time, we're working with administrators to say, hey, you gotta stay away from that time and let the teachers really drive that work so that we can see results, and they do see it as valuable time. And, and honestly, at, at Brookside this past Tuesday, what they talked about when we were doing this is time, 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 we need time, we want time, we, we want to meet and talk about these things, we just don't have enough time, which I, I understand, I totally understand. So it's kind of what we're struggling with, is, is where do we find the time and at the same time offer, give the kids everything that they need? Another thing that we struggle with is how do we get our special educators involved on, on teams when they are meeting with multiple staff members, and how do we get English learner teachers involved? I don't, we didn't know the answer to that either, because a lot of times, in order to free the teacher up, the kids have to be somewhere, and, and maybe they're with the special educator or, or an English learner teacher or, or an art teacher, how do we get those people involved? So that's another thing that we're kind of struggling with, and, and during the day, I don't know. And then finally, what we always are coming back to is how do we guarantee a viable curriculum for every student? So how do we guarantee that when a kid comes to the third grade, that they've had the same experience, that, and it doesn't matter if they're at Memorial, if they're at Brookside, if they're in your classroom, your classroom, or your classroom? We want to make sure that they come into each class with the same set of skills. And the best way to do is if we're sitting in the room, talking about what we're teaching about. So that's where we're going with professional learning communities, and we, we hope that we can continue it through all the schools.
Thank you. Any member have any questions?
Just, Craig, I want to applaud you, I love, I love the fact that you're working on that, on, that you're really focused on creating that consistency and doing that through the great dialogue that you're having with all the, you know, with, with the teachers that are actually on the ground and, on the ground running with it. I think it's fantastic, and, and creating that consistent experience for all students, knowing that all students learn at different paces, learn in different ways. I, I think at the end, at the end of the day, everybody, making sure everybody reaches the finish line, even though they may find multiple ways to get there, I think is, is fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's very important that, you know, you, you have dialogue, you've started dialogue, and now you can move forward with it. You've just got to keep the momentum going.
Right.
Great job.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next agenda item is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
I'm here for the committee's approval this evening, five warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of one thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor.
Second warrant is in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand three hundred seven dollars and three cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor.
The third warrant is in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars and eight cents.
Motion from Jim, second by Joe, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of forty-two thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Motion from Scott, second by Jim, all in favor.
And the last warrant is in the amount of three hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred ninety dollars and twenty-two cents.
Motion by Jen, second by John, all in favor.
The committee also has a course reimbursement request for their approval in the amount of four thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Motion from Jen, second by Jim, all in favor.
And the committee also has a list of the latest ties from our previous meeting, and there is a gift.
There is a gift. This gift is from the Milford High School class of nineteen fifty-nine. To be used at the disgrace, discretion of the Milford High School, the amount is three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Can I have a motion? From John, second by Scott, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much, it's very kind. Next agenda item is subcommittee updates. We have budget.
We had a meeting last week, and we reviewed some preliminary school choice numbers that we're gonna share with the committee at, at the next meeting, but overall, we saw the, the lowest increase in school choice out that we've seen in several years, and we saw net improvement of about sixteen students. So I think we're starting to see the numbers trend in, in the right direction, and we'll have a lot more detail about those numbers for you at, at the next meeting. And then the, the rest of the meeting was spent preparing for the FinCom Education Subcommittee Meeting, just going through the, the agenda, and that meeting's been rescheduled for later this month.
Any member? Okay, policy?
Yes, we met tonight before this meeting, and the Department of Education has put out a new policy, as they like to do, mandating education in the area of substance abuse and developmentally appropriate instruction and curriculum for students about the dangers of substance abuse. So we talked tonight about crafting a draft for Milford's policy, and we should be ready with a first read for our next meeting.
Ms. Scott?
So the, the Department of Ed is saying that we need to have a course offering around substance abuse, or we have to have a policy around substance abuse?
Actually, both.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I'm sure there's lots of funding going on with that, and they're infinite wisdom, they're always so good about funding everything they mandate.
We, we need to have a, there's, there's some guidelines around a policy that we need to have in place, but we also need to have programming in place to support the policy.
And where are we with that?
Uh, I think with the policy, we're just about ready to bring it to the committee.
That part's easy.
But the, the programming, yeah, the programming's tricky.
That's the easy part of it.
Yeah, no, the, the programming's tricky. We have, we have, I, I think a pretty good curriculum at the secondary level through our health courses, and what we're really looking at, and we're piloting right now, second step at the preschool and kindergarten levels, and we're looking to potentially expand that, but that's gonna take some discussion and, I think, some real thoughtful implementation.
Okay. My ask would just be, when, when the policy does come for a first reading, can we get a little bit more content? I, it would be helpful for me, and I want to speak for other members, if we can get some more content around what is the ask, both from a policy perspective as well as the coursework? Does it have to be across all grades? Does, you don't have to get into, this is what we're gonna teach on day one, but what is the DOE's expectation? I think that'll help from a budgetary perspective, because, as I said, sort of tongue-in-cheek, they're not, they're always so fantastic about funding everything that they mandate, and there may be some actual costs that are associated with it, that maybe require supplies and materials. Be great if we can work it in with our existing curriculum, but if we can get some, what exactly is the ask from a course piece, I think that'll help us both from a budget perspective and, and just from an understanding.
Yeah, the nice thing about, we, we have the memo from the DSC that we can bring, we can attach to the, the first reading of the budget. But the nice thing about it is it kind of dovetails into kind of our work with Castle and social emotional learning. So it's kind of work we're kind of already, kind of moving towards. So in this, in this case, in this particular case, I should say, I think it's a direction we're going in anyways, and, you know, the policy just is kind of part of the business end of it.
No, I just, I want to see what our, what, what we need to do from an educational I just, I want to see what our, what we need to do from an educational component. Policy's an easy part. Not to say your work is easy, but it's the, of the two pieces of this, that's the easier one.
No, I think we had that same conversation tonight. You can put policy together overnight.
Sure. It's the easier part of the conversation. So, I get it.
And I think we were also, I think everyone was pretty thoughtful. And Judy Dagnes was there and Lucy Jenkins in terms of, especially at the younger grades, we're not going to be hitting kids over the head ages five and six with drugs, alcohol.
I was gonna say, at some point we go from education to education.
It'll be very foundational in terms of very, how do you make good choices? How do you, how do you advocate for yourself, things like that.
Good. Any other member? Next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items we would like to have added? Next agenda item is old business.
I was gonna say, you know, we don't have the Woodland School on here tonight for subcommittee update. But, and I know you touched on, and there are actually some video clips from the Woodland dedication and Kevin's video tonight. But I think it, it's really important to talk about, you know, we've talked about some of the people who've led the building committee. But there were a lot of people at that dedication this past Sunday. And that was a full day affair, especially I'm thinking of Tim and Chris and Lisa, the administration at Woodland, Craig, Kevin. You were all there. Kathy, you were there. A lot of other Milford Public Schools admin were there to support the opening of Woodland. And a lot of great students from the high school, Nadine was there, a lot of high school kids in the music department were there. It was just a really professional, wonderful showing and tribute with, with a lot of hard work on, on the part of our, you know, Milford Public School staff. So it was a great job. Went very well.
Any other member? Okay. Now, we do have an executive session this evening. It's to talk about a Milford Teachers Association grievance that will require roll call. Jim?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We will not be going back into open session. So I have motion for adjournment, please. Scott, second by Jim, all in favor. Good night and thank you very much. Have a safe weekend.